All right, I'll call to order the pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. Happy New Year, uh, happy new decade of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. Uh, at this time, I would inquire as to County Manager Beth Jones, if there are any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Sir Chairman Mallory, no adjustments.
There are none, any from board members?
I had one, uh, request, um, under new business.
And that's during the pre-agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, with that adjustment, uh, move on to, um, review the agenda this evening. Uh, there are no presentations of any awards this evening. We had a very long meeting in December and I think it sucked the oxygen out of all the staff. And, uh, so this is, uh, a pretty, uh, thin, uh, agenda this evening, so, uh, we will probably move pretty quickly. Public hearings are non-scheduled, administrative matters that are appropriate for consideration on our consent agenda. I'll ask, uh, County Manager to please summarize.
Thank you Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from the South Iredell Volunteer Fire Department and Mr. Green is here to make this request on their behalf to use five thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, um, for, from the South Iredell Rescue Reserve Account to cover the cost of equipment purchased to upgrade the level of service to medium rescue standard. Mr. Green?
Thank you Ms. Jones, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a similar request to what we've seen over the last couple of years. As you are aware, the rescue squads and those fire departments serving as rescue providers have a reserve account, uh, to buy equipment and other necessary items to maintain or upgrade their level of service. South Iredell is requesting, um, to spend six thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and withdraw five thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars from the reserve account to purchase equipment to upgrade from the light rescue standard to the medium rescue standard.
Now, Kent, this is, uh, funding that, uh, is not come, is not provided through the fire tax, but is through, uh, the general fund, correct?
That is correct, just like all rescue squads are funded through the general fund.
Are there any, uh, questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I just want to be very clear here where it says to, uh, upgrade to the level of service to medium rescue. This is not creating any new rescue districts.
No, sir, no, sir. South Iredell already has a rescue district as one of the five agencies in the southern end of the county when Mooresville Rescue dissolved, so that's, that rescue district already exists.
And that is not served by the, either the North Iredell Rescue Squad or the Iredell County Rescue Squad.
That's correct.
That's why they have that.
And Mooresville Rescue, Mooresville Fire Rescue still serves as the primary heavy rescue provider as well as providing all the technical rescue disciplines for the entire area south of Troutland.
I just don't want to send the message that all South Iredell upgraded to mediums a little. They just upgraded to the medium standard because they already had a rescue district.
That's correct.
It's not creating new.
That's correct.
And this will deplete that account when it comes to money.
It will, and this is, is commonly, common what we see, um, when the rescue providers come and ask for funds, it will deplete that account and then in the new budget year, it'll start replenishment. And every few years, the squads will come back and ask for, for funds for equipment.
Now, the recent purchases that we made of the, uh, walkie-talkies and all that, that, uh, that came out of fire tax.
Correct.
And that was strictly for fire departments.
Correct.
And rescue is not covered by that, that would be a separate appropriation.
That is correct, however, uh, we are working with some of the departments that have some of the newer, older radio equipment that was not purchased with the fire tax dollars. It was general fund monies, uh, through emergency management to secure some of that equipment back and so that we can provide that back out to the rescue squads.
Okay, well, yeah, let's use what's, what's serviceable.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? Uh, consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Kent, and happy new year.
The next item is a request from Parks and Recreation and Michelle Hepler is here to make this request for approval to apply for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Good evening, everyone.
You're swinging for the fence.
Yes, over the center field. Um, I hope everyone had a happy new year. I am here on behalf of Parks and Recreation to request approval to apply for the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant. Um, that grant cycle is, um, coming up this spring and we would need formal permission from you to apply for that. Um, it's considered a reimbursement grant for the land acquisition of the recreation center. We have already purchased that property and, um, back in December of two thousand eighteen, we acquired a waiver of retroactivity to qualify the purchase as our match. We, we received approval from the state to do that. Um, so if awarded, the grant reimbursement, um, from the property, the eight acres, twenty-one thousand square foot facility, um, we would qualify for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Any further questions, comments?
That four hundred and twenty-five thousand, if that grant is awarded, then we can spend that anywhere in the county for recreation, correct?
For recreation, yes, sir. There are no restrictions in regard to the location in which it has to be, um, used.
Cause I know it's a change.
Very similar to, um, the land acquisition grant that we received for Jennings Park. That also was a reimbursement because the county purchased the property on the front end, um, it's a reimbursement, so it's, it, the money goes back into the park fund.
Cause I know we rearranged some money there.
We did, yes, sir.
Any further questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Michelle?
I was going for that.
Thank you.
Uh, we appreciate your staff's work on, uh, these grants are very successful in terms of, uh, grant writing. They've been, uh, so successful that we've almost come to rely on it, uh, but, uh, we will, uh, be pulling for you. And do you want to share with, a little bit about, uh, the dedication ceremony at the East Iredell Lions?
Um, sure, yeah, that, if, if time allows.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not going anywhere.
So.
Hurry.
I will. Um, most of you are aware that the East Iredell Lions Club, uh, Community Organization donated eight acres and, um, a building to the Parks and Recreation Department back in late December two thousand and eighteen. Um, we have taken that property, renovated it, um, actually, they donated it in two thousand seventeen, I'm sorry, it was two thousand seventeen. So we took the last year and a half, we've renovated the facility, upgraded with new HVAC, um, we made the restrooms ADA accessible, um, improved the kitchen, added a walking trail and paved, um, a handicap parking space, um, completely redid that building, so if you've not been in there, um, it, it'll be a great treat. Our dedication and grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony will be Saturday, January the twenty-fifth, in honor of what the East Iredell Lions Club Community did, um, and with, with regards to their ham breakfast, we are gonna serve ham breakfast. So, um, from nine thirty AM to ten AM, we'll have ham biscuits, coffee and juice, and then, um, ask for remarks, um, and the ribbon cutting at ten fifteen.
There's a ball field back there too, yes?
There used to be a ball field back there, it's, it's been pretty grown up, it hasn't been used in a really long time, but the potential to put, um, playing space out there is, is definitely an option.
What sort of sport or sports could go back there? Would it just be a practice field or is it big enough to be a baseball field or a soccer field?
It could, it could, pickleball, yes. Um, it's not large enough to do a three hundred and ten foot baseball field, um, but we could very easily do a two fifty. Um, I, I think that the best use would probably be multi-purpose and allowing, um, practice for soccer, football, lacrosse, anything like that, um, but then having, you know...
Ballpark, how much would it take to, to get that space at least where it could become practice space?
Um, so it's, it's pretty rough right now, it's been grown up, our guys have been bush hogging it and trying to keep it mowed down, it does need some work. Um, I would say easily fifty grand could turn that into a, a playable ball field surface. Um, to do it and do it like league play, you know, we're talking probably more like a hundred thousand, but I think for fifty thousand dollars, you could tear it up, get the ruts out of it, sew it and have it ready to play. There's also...
Our facility services did, who did the work on the exterior of the building and the signage?
One hundred percent Facility Services Department.
And I'm gonna tell you, it looks good, I mean, I ju, I live on River Hill Road and I gotta tell you, the way that it used to look and the way that it looks now, it is night and day. It really looks sharp from the outside. I've not been inside, of course, but, um...
It's transformational.
This, uh, to, to me, it seems like that, that site would be better off if we, it would probably be more secure and everything if, if we had more traffic there for something besides just the walking trail, so be real interested if, uh, if there's a need.
Yeah.
And, and to know more specifically how much it would cost, at least get it where kids could practice, have soccer practice, baseball practice, football practice there.
Yeah, there's, um, there's also space for a small playground too, so long-term plans, when we originally acquired the property, you know, we looked at the potential and, and a multi-use field and a small playground was definitely in that, in that vision.
That trailer park that's close by, I feel sure, normally I wouldn't, you know, playground in the middle of a rural area, but...
I think it would serve a great need, yeah.
How about the vertical structure, is that something that you'd rent out for parties and stuff like that?
We do, so, um, as a matter of fact, it's rented out next Saturday already. Um, the, the building is for rent for twenty-five dollars an hour or a hundred and fifty dollars for the day, um, and that's for birthday parties, family reunions, meetings, we had rotary there today, um, so that was, you know, it's certainly space with tables and chairs and a kitchen that, that's usable.
Our rec department's really done well, I mean, with the, the stony point site and then in this one about taking properties that the community had that didn't really know what to do with and turning it into a real asset, um, where it kind of continued in the function that it, it had operated before and then enhanced it, so I, just the, the vision that y'all have had on how to make maximum use out of this, out of these properties is, is quite impressive, so congratulations.
Thank you.
A little more to be in there for your ribbon cutting.
Great, thank you.
And that is a cholesterol-free ham, isn't it?
Yes.
It's all fat-free and healthy.
Good.
No salt.
We'll have coffee, we'll have coffee plain for you.
Okay, the next item is a request from the Finance Department and Dean Leo is here to make this request for approval of a five-year lease for space in the rear parking lot at Registered Deeds to place a North Carolina State Employees Credit Union ATM and adoption of a resolution to rent space with authorization for the County Manager to sign a mutually agreed upon lease agreement.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
As, uh, the board is aware, uh, we provided a space for State Employees Credit Union to place a ATM on the Registered Deeds parking lot off of, uh, I think that's Constitution Lane right there, but it got to be too congested because of the construction for the jail. We were asked to remove that, we did, and we've been looking for a site to place this machine since that time. We had, uh, proposed a space last year in January, I believe it was, and, uh, we had searched that space out, but the board was considered, was concerned about that particular placing of the machine, the accessibility, the location, so you asked us to go back and try to find a new space. We did do that, we did find a space that is right behind Registered Deeds on the south, excuse me, the northwest corner of the Registered Deeds parking lot, there is a dumpster on that site right now. Uh, David Salivian and I actually looked at the site, we had a meeting with, uh, the key players in that area as the board had asked us to do, and all of them agreed that that would be a good site. We specifically did talk to the Registered Dees and he agreed he would not be using that space and it should not interfere with his operations, uh, for the parking lot and people getting into his office, so we did get good agreement from that and we decided to move forward with that. We've been working with the, uh, State Employees Credit Union for the last year, trying to put their, to, all the details together, and, uh, we did finally, uh, come to agreement on the terms. Uh, the, uh, Credit Union, of course, is going to be placing the machine, they will be, uh, absorbing all of the cost for putting that machine in place. Uh, for doing that, they would like to have a total of eight years on that space so they can kind of recoup some of their costs. The initial term's gonna be five years, during that period, they will pay us one hundred and fifty dollars per month for the lease rental on that. If they exercise the three-year option for that, the lease will automatically go up to two hundred dollars a month for that three years. At the end of the eight-year total term, the board will be able to, to, to take a look at that space, see if it's needed, if it's not needed, and if, uh, if it's mutual at that time, then a new agreement can be negotiated. As, uh, County Manager did say, we do have a resolution in place in your packet, if you do so resolve to, to allow us to rent that, contract is in my hands now, I'm reviewing that, and any, uh, terms that need it, we'll get, uh, the County Attorney's review as well. We'll return that to, uh, SCCU and we'll get that final lease done. While that's being done, once that's done, we're asking the County Manager to be given authorization to sign it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Wyatt?
In this particular ATM, it would be just one of those whole walk-up machines, it's not like you're gonna drive-through.
It's not a drive-through, it will be a walk-up, there'll be, uh, three spaces from that area, all of that is right in front of the dumpster that's there now, there'll be three spaces, two of those will be dedicated to handicap and one will be just for, for standard drive-up parking.
How soon you think you have it completed?
Uh, I think the lease will be calling for a July one or somewhere in that timeframe.
Does that white building right beside of it, does that do to come out of there?
The white, oh, the one behind, uh, next to...
Yeah, behind.
I am not sure what the status on that building is.
That's white building. There.
Right here is the, is the dumpster he's speaking of, I believe, and then that triple Y or whatever.
No, that's, that's the old EMS space, that's a protection.
That's SVU, the...
Special Victims was gonna move into where the old E comes.
That's moving to where E comes, and then the SVU unit will, will move, will be gone.
Okay, so that, that white building there that we're seeing, that'll, that'll be nixed?
No.
Or it'll still be used for office?
The SVU building has been here, it's black.
Okay, okay, so the black building's gonna go away?
That's what...
That's the water problem.
Triple Y.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I just, I guess my comment is to make sure we don't sign a long-term lease and then need that property in three or four years, but you've already figured that out, I'm sure.
Well, I think the, the, part of the point of this whole exercise was to find a location that would in fact stand the test of time, be centrally located to be able to provide services and not be located on the periphery in an area that very well might be, uh, you know, impacted by future construction, uh, so, uh, I wanna thank, uh, the staff and, uh, I wanna thank the Registered Deeds, uh, Mr. Wyatt for actually originally suggesting that as a possibility.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and it looks a lot better, look a lot better than having a dumpster sitting there right in the middle of it.
It looked a lot better than a dumpster, yes, sir.
So, um, I think a good result all the way around.
Remember which one.
Yeah. Is there a consent?
Consent.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the final item is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on December the third, two thousand and nineteen.
I actually have one.
Oh, would you do?
I, I do.
Okay.
And, uh, when, uh, in my quote...
Uh-huh.
Of the, uh, cadet prayer etched in stone at West Point, it says, "God make us choose the harder right over the easier wrong and never let us accept the half truth when the whole truth can be one." The spinn of the one should be W-O-N, not O-N-E.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
I think we need to have a call meeting on that.
Okay, uh, I believe that there is one correction.
Yes.
And that, has that made it to everybody's packet?
Oh, no, I did, I can make a copy.
Okay, just, just...
I did make a correction of Mr. Mallory's comments.
Just, I can summarize it.
Okay.
But basically, if you recall during the public hearing, I, I mentioned, uh, how bad we, how bad off we were, you know, based on old decrepit buildings and, you know, went on and on about that, and then the point was to get everybody's attention that that's not how we were, that was all facetious, it was, you know, to make the point that we're in a completely opposite situation. Well, the original minutes just ended with, we're in a terrible fix.
I forgot to paste my other page over.
So, uh, the additional, uh, context provides, uh, you know, an accurate, uh, minutes of the meeting, from my perspective.
You just solved the mystery for Gene. He said there's nothing more to that.
I thought you talked a lot longer than that.
Really not.
Sorry.
I'm with you, cause when you got by my office yesterday, I said, "I wonder why that paragraph was so short."
Sorry. I knew there was more to that story, I didn't know.
That probably would've been a good bet on any... Okay, uh, consent on the minutes approved.
Consent.
Changes is no. Okay. Okay, um, we will have, uh, no announcements of any vacancies, but we do have, uh, uh, two appointments, uh, for Personnel Advisory Committee, three appointments, and the Transportation Advisory Committee Board, uh, for two appointments, uh, which we'll deal with at the seven o'clock hour. Um, no unfinished business, nor more ever, we will not have a public comment period, uh, this evening. Uh, we do have one matter for, uh, number, item eight, new business, Commissioner Howe.
I'm gonna pass out a potential resolution, I just wanted to ask for, uh, consensus to ask staff and attorney to look into a potential resolution, um, several counties in North Carolina, due to, um, recent events nationwide, particularly in Virginia, uh, they have, they're doing resolutions that, um, basically show support of the Constitution and particularly the Second Amendment Constitutional Rights Protection County, so I'm asking us to consider a resolution that would make Iredell County a Second Amendment Constitutional Rights, uh, Protection County, and I sent, I'm passing out a, a sample for y'all to look at, and I just wanted a consensus for consideration, to ask staff and Lisa to look at it and send us out a suggestion if we're interested in doing that. Um, it's more symbolic because it's already in the Constitution, but it just shows our support of the Constitution and it would read along the lines of, um, that Iredell County, uh, government would not allow gun confiscation or other restrictions that infringe on the right to keep and bear arms by law-abiding citizens as expressed in the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution, and it would further assert that Iredell County Government would use legal, every legal means necessary to protect the Second Amendment rights of county citizens, so I just wanted to see if y'all were okay with a consensus of asking staff and Lisa to look at it.
Uh, I think it's appropriate, uh, since several counties have been, uh, adopting this, to go ahead and look at it, but we need to look at it as it relates to particularly our own restrictions on, uh, cause it says any restrictions, and we have restrictions ourselves.
Mm-hmm, right.
On, uh, folks coming on county property, uh, with, uh, certain weapons, so, um, we just need to make sure that it's consistent and to the extent that it's not consistent with our current policy, we need to modify it accordingly if we're gonna, you know, generally support the right of our citizens to bear arms, which we do, uh, but there's always an exception to a rule for a good cause, and, uh, that's what we get paid to evaluate.
And Mr. Howe, uh, Sheriff's already got one of these, he was gonna bring to our next meeting, can you get with him and y'all compare notes and see what?
Yeah. Well, that's why I said he could, I'll just tell, I'll call him and ask him to get with Beth and Lisa and, and work on it, um, and, and then get it to the, our board to look at, to see what we wanna do, yep.
Okay. If, if we, if we do it, and just for full disclosure here, I'm a member of NRA, okay? So, um, and, and I don't, I don't like what I hear a lot of politicians saying about confiscation, restriction, I, anybody who wants to pass a law that makes me a criminal for, for, for being a citizen who enjoys, uh, the privileges of the Second Amendment, uh, I'm not thrilled about. Um, a lot of this has come based upon the actions in the state of Virginia. If we word something, if we come up with something, I would rather wait to pass it until there's something brewing in North Carolina, that way, it, I think it would have more of an impact. If we pass this thing now, I'm not so sure that it has any sort of an impact if somebody in a campaign or if it looks like we're gonna lose the General Assembly or State Senate and, and they are, are rattling their peace pipe, so to speak, instead of their saber, um, but it looks like that there's, that we are at risk in the state of North Carolina of, of having our own state government try to usurp the Second Amendment, the Constitution, then I would be, I think it would be more appropriate to pass it at that time, but to, to get one ready, I'm, I'm good to go for that, but, um, I mean, right now, our members, there's no way anything to restrict our right to bear arms would make it through the Republican, uh, General Assembly in Raleigh. The governor might support it, but nobody else would, so, uh, it's just a matter, and the reason I say that is because I don't want, because I've never been in favor of us voting on resolutions in support of federal legislation or, and I've even kind of resisted us sticking our nose too much in state business because I really hate it when they stick our, their nose in our business, so that's...
That's why I just wanted to look at it and get everybody's opinion and get ready if we needed to, have a, have something ready to go and we can decide what to do then.
Have no objection to that. Have no objection to that at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll just, seeing that that is passed on to staff to...
Don't shoot the arrow yet.
But get back to us as it relates to any kind of being consistent with how we enforce our own rules. Okay. All right. You want to give us a preview?
Absolutely. Just a reminder that our State's full library is closed this week. They are relocating to the lower level. So they are doing a lot of moving and putting up shelves and moving books and things of that nature, and they will reopen on Monday, January the 13th. All other branches are open, so this is just our State's full branch that is closing as they're relocating things within the facility. Again, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, but property tax listings, they went out January the 2nd, so we are now in the listing period, and that extends through January the 31st. And this is a statutory requirement that you must list, list your property, the tax assessor during that period. You can also contact the website for more information or call the tax office if you have questions. Our annual employee slash retiree luncheon that we normally have before Christmas, if you remember, we moved that last year to after Christmas because it seems to be very busy, and we actually were snowed out last year. So that will actually be occurring next Tuesday on January the 14th at the Civic Center, and it will be from 11 until 1:30. So please, please come, attend. We have a new caterer. So we're doing some things that are a little different, so we're really excited about it. So hopefully we can get some really good attendance. And this is really the only time of year that we have over 1,000 county employees. This is the only time of year that those employees can come together. We can show our appreciation for employees, and they get to talk to other employees at other departments, and some of them don't even realize that they all work for Aridale County. So this is a really good event, and I encourage everybody, all of our employees, to attend. And this is a really good opportunity for them to meet the board as well. Some of them know you, know your faces, but haven't had an opportunity to talk to you. So we appreciate you standing and doing the greeting line and greeting all the employees. I know it's a, a long process for you, but we appreciate it.
That was a treat.
It's, they look forward to it. They really enjoy it and look forward to it. So we appreciate you doing that. And then finally, I was going to...
Let me do ask, is David Salivi going to be there picking and grinning?
He's going to be our, he has been our entertainment. He and his group have been our entertainment for the past couple of years, and I think that that's, that's been really good. So yes, he will be there.
We have a couple other surprises as well.
Okay.
Maybe we could appropriate some money out of contingency fund for some music and voice lessons from Mr. Salivi. But anyway.
Knowing him, he might appreciate that.
It wouldn't sound authentic.
They're actually really good.
They are.
And it, and having that live music there really does add a, quite a festive mood.
It does, absolutely.
They are, they are a very good group.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, you were, I interrupted you.
Well, I was going to announce the Lions Club, but Michelle did that for our 5 o'clock, so I'm going to hold that for the 7 o'clock.
Well, I don't think there's anything further on our pre-agenda.
I am so sorry. I forgot. I, thank goodness for Amy. You have before you the biannual report for the Parks and Recreation. This is for extending through June 2019. So a lot of great information. Please, please take a look at it. They have done an amazing job putting this report together, so I just wanted to draw your attention to it and make sure that you saw it. Like I said, Michelle and her group have done an amazing job putting all this information together for their report.
And guys, Amy put a reminder for calendars on your desk. If you guys get anything, will y'all please make sure you send it to Amy? Amy's trying to keep a master list for all of us for events and invitations, so it really helps her if we can let her know, because sometimes we get emails individually that everybody doesn't get. So if we can let her know and she can get them out to everybody, we appreciate it. Thank you, Amy.
I've got one little thing to add. I've been getting a couple of phone calls this week from several of our farmers, and they were asking me, and he said, "I got a tax list in form. I thought y'all passed something where we didn't have to pay tax on farm equipment anymore." Well, we did, but because of the Machinery Act, it was challenged at the state level that we could not exempt somebody from personal property tax in this county. It would have to be statewide for that to happen. So although we did approve that, that farmers would not have to pay tax on machinery, because of the Machinery Act and the way it's written, we can't do that. So that thing died on the vine.
Well, Commissioner McNeely lobbed that across. Now he's on the other side of the net with the legislature. He can lock, you know, hit it on back.
I had, I had a conversation with Representative McNeely about that, and I, basically, I started with, "Where were you?" But he said, "I'm still working on it. It's not dead yet. I'm still working on it." He said, "But it's not going to happen this year." I said, "Well, we trust you're digging it."
So do your fellow colleagues. The hymn's what you're saying.
For all calls to Representative McNeely.
If it helps, Mr. Chairman, it actually goes up higher. It's because of the Constitution that it got booted back from the state. So yours was a resolution, but the Constitution...
Trumped us.
Trumped, yes.
There's that darn Constitution.
Maybe we can use a different verb for that?
Yeah, yeah, let's use a different one. But either way, farmers will have to pay personal property tax on their equipment for this year, anyway. Well, see what happens, see what Mr. Magic can pull out of his representative seat. Nevertheless, it's not going to happen this year.
Okay. Any additional comments? Well, at this time, we will recess until the 7 o'clock hour.